You're already dependent on mine.
Yeah, either or.
I moved it up here when I'm worried.
No, you're good. I would guess.
We're ready.
All right, great. Meeting will come to order. Let the record show that we're missing Kathleen Harris tonight. Need a motion to excuse?
Is online with us.
Then we don't need that.
Kathleen?
I'm here.
All right, great. Join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Any additions or corrections to the agenda?
We'd like to talk to you a little about the ERC. The holiday last week didn't get Legals' opinion until recently. We hadn't given it to her in time to account and give her time to look at it before we put the packet out. So what we'd like to do is we've given you all of the information, but I don't want to throw it at you tonight and then ask you to make a decision. So with your blessing, we'd like to pull it from the agenda, let you look at it and absorb it. And then we can look at it again in two weeks if that's okay with you.
Any questions or disagreements? Are we good to go? We'll pull it from the agenda. Need a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Thanks, Mike. Second?
Again.
Thanks. Well, questions, comments? On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
There, you will have to ask Kathleen particularly for her vote.
I forgot to unmute. Sorry. I voted yes.
Great, thank you, Kathleen. Staff Committee and Agency reports the Water Tower Foundation.
Mayor Teltor, good evening. How are you? We, as a staff, put together just kind of a brief PowerPoint of what transpired and poured the foundation to the running board, just for council information. So basically what you're looking at there is it's a drawn picture that was taken over the top for a while. Concrete trucks were... For some reason, my car wanted to... So...
Yes, sir.
This is Red War Six Foundation for on Saturday, November 23rd, 2024. Started the morning with plan.
Oh, you say it.
On Saturday, November 23rd, the city's red war contractor scheduled for our dad's foundation. The plan included two pump pumps, 25 concrete trucks, two separate concrete plants, and a team of about 20, 50, excuse me, 50 people to bring it all together. This is a picture of the very beginning of the pour. The first truck came in about 2:50 in the morning. And then this is the first truck as it's in the pump. The rest of these are just pictures as they were started pouring. This was probably within the second or third load. Again, you can still go to the anchor bolts and you can see the concrete underneath. That's probably about a third of the way up. This is another overhead picture of the foundation and the rebar. You can see the ring. The inside of the ring that you see there inside of the bolts, that's actually going to be where the reservoir goes. And the rest of that on the outside is just the external part of the foundation. That's just looking to the east. And so as you can look there, they've actually, this is about 3:30 in the afternoon. They've actually reached the top in the middle and they're starting to work their way out around back to the outside edges. This was about 5 o'clock in the evening. Roughly 14 hours from after we started pouring. The end is in sight. That's what the anchor bolt sucked like. That's a three-inch round piece of solid steel that's been threaded on both ends. And our reservoir contractor actually builds that stuff themselves to build their own reservoirs. My summary not going to show up for some reason, so... The summary in the end, it ended up being 1,520 yards of concrete total. They poured it approximately 100 yards an hour. The concrete came from three plants. There was 67,763 feet of number eight rebar, which is number one-inch rebar. Rebar, the rebar laid end to end equals about 12.83 miles. There is 180,930 pounds of rebar in the foundation. There's 41 three-inch anchor bolts. And from start to finish, it took about 19 and a half hours to complete. Again, this was just for information. I'm sorry that the presentation didn't...
When do you anticipate the construction of the actual water tower?
They broke cylinders on Monday and the concrete is hardening as expected. They were able to move forward with that. They were able to move forward with uncovering it, destroying the forms. The foundation portion of the contractor came pulled out today. And the dirt contractor will be back tomorrow to finish backfilling around the foundation and compact. And we estimate that the boiler makers could possibly be here early next Monday. And I imagine they probably won't see much for the first, hopefully after Christmas, but they'll get mowed in and they'll start getting their stuff set up. Might see some steel show up before Christmas.
Backfilling will start tomorrow and they'll bring that up on this and do the patch test to make sure we have the action and then the tank erection is scheduled to start on the 16th. And they'll go for that one week and then shut down for Christmas. So it'll start off the floor, getting all that packed and put together. And then part of the new year, you'll see roughly a rig per week.
You guys did a great job.
Fantastic.
We didn't do a whole lot.
Sorry, we think you did a pretty good job. He's gonna have to live with that.
Can I say something?
Yes, you may, Kathleen.
I just wanted to say I appreciated the personal tour that I got from Rob. That was awesome. No, I did not put my handprints in it, Mayor, I promise you. But it was really cool and all the people that I talked to up there working were very, you know, very approachable, very willing to share all their information. So it was a really, really nice time to participate, I guess, as a council member. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Kathleen. Any other questions or comments from council? You have other staff committee and agency reports. Are there any questions that council has for the ones that you were given? You got them here. Great, thank you. All right, so we move on to the public hearing, which is now open for ordinance 24-15, the subdivision code update.
I apologize for the amount of paper in your packets.
I read every page, all 100 and whatever that was.
730.
But there's a lot of information there. I'll start with, you know, just what the changes really are in the subdivision code. We've started with the definitions. They're mainly just cleaning up existing language, removing a few. I think we added a couple, but just cleaning it up, making it just standard and any errors in spelling and that stuff corrected. Second thing was standard exemptions as provided in the state. Ours didn't necessarily match all the way through. Most of them did, but there were a couple that have changed in the last couple of years. So we did change those. So they do match the state standard. One big thing that we did, currently we have a type one short plat, which is a one-to-four lot short plat, type two short plat that is five to nine. And when we did, when we did the original update to the common plan and development rates back July of 23, we did modify that chapter 17, which is the application procedures, which we decided at that time that it was best to modify that. So we are now going to a single short plat. So you can do a single, up to nine lots and a short plat. So, and we also did remove the short subdivision committee meeting or review as a review board. So it'll now be just as illustrative, typically the same way that it is now pretty much everywhere else in the state. They're typically always administrative. The additional other thing on the major plats, we did modify that to go to the hearing examiner instead of going before the planning commission and city council. Just easier having just the one meeting. And it is a lot easier. Again, that is another standard that is typical of most cities and counties in the state. It's one of the personal concerns out. You know, if it meets the standards, it goes forward. The next thing was the traffic analysis trigger that we added. So if you go, if the application or the project goes over 100 average daily trips or 10 hourly, 10 peak hour trips, there is now a standard that would require them to submit a traffic analysis. It's not a traffic study necessarily, but it is an analysis to give us better understanding of what's there. But we don't have to rely on going through the CIPA process to trigger the need for mitigation. We will, at the time we accept the application, we will get that information with the project so we can make the call at that point. And the best place, you know, the good trigger is on the short plats where you might have a multifamily dwelling where, in most cases, they don't require CIPA review. So this will cause that trigger to happen. So we'll get that. Then there was the zero lot line standards. In the past, we do have the basic outline for having zero lot lines, but we didn't have the actual standards, the setbacks, the easement requirements, that information. So we did add that.
What is a zero lot line subdivision?
It would be like a duty where they have the common wall and then there is, each lot would, you know, each unit would be on a separate lot so they could sell it separately. They wouldn't have to go necessarily through the condominium process to develop that. So it's easier and it was a request. Several local developers have been interested in that. That was one that was one of that. We did do some coordinate, we did coordinate review to match the procedures in the chapter 17, application review section of our code. So that is updated. Binding site, the, our current binding site plan section chapter is a very unique and clumsy document. So we are going with the Moses Lake standard. It is an administrative review. So that will make it a bit quicker and easier to go through. Right now, we have, we just received a binding site plan amendment request. And even on those minor changes, we have to have the hearing examiner come in and do that process. So this will make it a whole lot easier for somebody to do the commercial and industrial type subdivisions through that process. Additionally, we are requiring now the record of survey when we do lot line adjustments. That was something that in the past, we did not require a record of survey, but everybody, you know, we do the letter and get the approvals done and then they get to the county and the county would say, no, we can't accept this without that record of survey. So we're just adding that at this point, so it's not a surprise to people. So those are the main things. There were several other minor, minor changes along the way. So the process, you know, we started this soon after the common plan amendment and developer edits back in July of 2023. Took several months to get through that. Once we did that, we provided those updates to the planning commission. They had a couple study sessions where we, it's some additional minor changes. They were pretty good with what we had. So then it went to public hearing on November 14th. And the planning commission did make a recommendation of approving, and that is included in your packets under that finding commission resolution 2405. Between that and now, we found out that legal counsel had not had a chance to review this. So then she did find some changes. So the ordinance that are, actually the copy that is in the packet of the changes does not include her chain, her modifications, which were very, very appropriate. They were typically, there were a couple missed hearing body directions, you know, so instead of saying, we had just missed things where something that was, that should have said going to, it was going to the hearing examiner, said it was going to the planning condition. So we fixed those and a couple definitions were modified and removed. That was the main thing there. So in the ordinance that you will be seeing later for first reading, the city council ordinance 24-15, which will be later on the agenda, does have those changes added to that document from what Anna recommended and its Stafford supporters. It did not go back before planning commission. So if that is an interest, can do that. But but it is really only minor things. So we're, it should go forward as it was. Beyond that.
So it doesn't have to go back to the planning commission if the council accepts it as changed?
Because this is a legislative action and you are having the public hearing, didn't you? If you have any additional questions, those are the main things. I know there's some confusion.
Since this is a public hearing, we have, this is the opportunity for the public to respond to this. I've got five people signed up to speak at the public hearing. Are you sure you signed up for this? Not really what you want? Did somebody want to speak on this is my question? Because you put your name down to speak and I just got a funny feeling this isn't quite what you were, that you thought you were signing up for. So is there anybody from the public with comments or questions on this? Great, great. Thank you. So we'll close the public hearing for the subdivision code update and we'll open the public hearing for our 24-15, the Grant County Development Agreement.
So this is an agreement to formalize the process and expectations for the annexation and providing services for the jail facility or the speedway used to be. So I'll just run through the main items, topics that are included that were of interest. The jail, this does dictate that the jail facility will conform to city construction standards, performance standards, land use and circulation standards. It defines jurisdictional authority for the facility depending on at what point it is in process. So it is an annexation agreement also, as well as a development agreement. So once the annexation occurs, everything will be the city's responsibility. But leading up to, we will jointly work with the county on all the standards, all the reviews. So that's that. Grant County is responsible at this point for the environmental review. They are working through the process for a short plat to create four lines up there. At this point, that has gone a little bit slow, but they're getting close. There is the shrub step habitat up there and that has caused them some slowdowns on that. They are working that through and they are the responsible for making those decisions. The city will designate the annexed land as public facility. That is included in the required, the city does require planning for any lands, you know, by policy. So that is something that the county has agreed to and is in the process. It does dictate that the county will build the road from the highway to their south boundary line. It will not go all the way down the hill and dots, but it will get to that south boundary line where the power lines are. The county will extend water from the Dollar Tree store to their south boundary. The city will take over the additional length from their south boundary down to the water treatment facility. And it will be a 12-inch line and they will have fire hydrants approved by both Jeremy and the Grant County Fire Marsh. So if anything happens, we'll meet those standards. There will be a fee in lieu of assignment of water rights associated with this application. And they are looking at 17,080 gallons per day for this facility. So that rate in association with the rate that for for providing, for getting water rights in the future is $1,900 per ER unit and there were 56 units. So there will be a fee associated with, that is $106,400, you know, for us to purchase additional water rights in the future. County will extend at their cost 12-inch sewer line main from the highway down to the wastewater facility. And a lot of these things are actually already done. So even though it's included in here, most of these things are done. The city will review all structure plans jointly, though it will depend on at what point, once it is annexed, we will take over everything. But anything that was submitted and is in process will continue with the jurisdiction that issued the permit. We won't take over the building permits on the site that have already been started. Any new buildings after the annexation will be our responsibility. It does define that the petition method will be used for the annexation procedures. And they will, the property, which is the town, will assume deadness upon that annexation. Will best development standards at the time of the filing. That's, that's many things that are included in there. This annexation agreement did start back in February of 2023. We had a first draft Anna and I had put together that went out for the first review by city departments and the county. On April, in April of 2023, the county responded with their review by the prosecutor attorney back in June of 2023. So that's when everything really got going. And so they finally were able to sign the agreement on November 5th of 2024. So the county commissioners are, have accepted and are agreeable to those items that are listed in that agreement. That's really all I have. At this point, it would be just going forward and operating them here.
And we will be talking about this a little. But the point is, is that this is a public hearing. So the question is, is there anybody from the public who would like to speak to this? And you really have to have a lot of knowledge. There's a lot, it's a pretty deep well that we wandered into today. So we appreciate your patience, but thanks, Ron. So next step on this.
This will be a public hearing that, once that's done, then there is a resolution later that would authorize you to sign that development agreement.
All right, great. Thanks, Ron. Any other questions from the public? With none, public hearing comes to a close. Take a break, Ron. Ordinances and resolutions, our first reading of ordinance 24-16, the ERC fee waiver. Which is off the agenda. That was quick. How'd you do, Josh? Ordinance 24-17, the 24 supplemental appropriation.
Good evening, councilors and mayor. So what I have here is supplemental appropriation is a nice way of saying amending the 2024 budget. What we have to do is, it's part of RCW to make sure that we don't spend more in the budget. So any funds... So any funds that we, anything additional that we do or any changes that we make, including transfers, that, those are included in expenditures and revenues because we're spending them from one fund and we're taking them as a revenue going to another fund if it's a transfer. We have to have a supplemental appropriation for that. So what we have here is the supplemental appropriation for the year. We are continuing to evaluate this, especially with the actual expenditures that are going on at the water tower and other projects right now. We're spending, having some big checks going out with those. So we're wanting to make sure that we're in that budget. We're not going to go over. So what we have is in our current expense fund, it's a hundred and eighty-one thousand. Our library fund, forty thousand. Our property tax was lower. We received less than property tax than expected. We'll get that later on, but year to date, we've received less than we expected to. I did talk with the treasurer's office and they said, we'll be getting quite a bit in December. But we're just wanting to make sure that we're covered. We're not over expending for this.
So that payments are kind of like an installment, a little bit now, a little bit later.
They shouldn't be. But with property taxes, everyone pays their property tax. You can pay it all in May. You can pay it in, pay in November. And, but if you pay late, then treasurer's office doesn't have that money to give us. So they're saying that a lot of people pay late. So with that, our park fund that's hitting, our park fund, our library fund. Our, so our park fund is seventy-five thousand. Our fire reserve fund, we have a transfer, I believe. Oh, it's a pass through. So we have twenty-two thousand two hundred. Our volunteers did more work than we expected to. So what we do is they pay, they go onto a state.
State fire, contract parts.
Yeah. So state fires, they pay us and then we pay the volunteers. It's just going straight through us. They can't directly pay the volunteers. So we're needing to pass those funds. As well as our TBD fund, which is the transportation benefit district. This is our crack seal project that we're extending and we're using the ARCA funds on that. Originally, we had thought that we were going to use it on the water tower, but then our loan came back at eighty-five percent per cent. So we're choosing instead to use those ARCA funds in Greece instead. We see to transfer those funds over. But that is an unexpected expense. We didn't know what it was going to be. Then we have sanitation funds in there. This was, services were slightly higher than we had budgeted for, but our revenue is also higher than we had budgeted for. So that makes it nice and easy to go across. And our water sewer fund, this is where quite a few transfers are happening. So we're transferring a little over a million to the TBD fund for that ARCA funds. Has to come out of the water sewer to there. And then we're transferring money, we'd like to transfer money from the water sewer fund into the water sewer construction. In that fund that we're not actively using, we just like to roll into the construction funds. So we're still being the zero balance. And then going to go into construction. And then we have a little bit of money going to our public works trust fund that was for the reservoir design as well as equipment rental fund. Of the vehicles, we just didn't have enough early leases, we didn't put enough into that. I know that's a lot. I can go into more details.
So essentially kind of like forced balancing the checkbook going off of what your estimated, what numbers were versus what finally came in?
Yes. So you estimate expenditures and you estimate revenues. Now we have almost year-to-date actuals. So we're going off of what we currently have and what we're expecting to spend in the next month. Plus there is an open window in January. So we have to estimate that as well. And we're, worst case scenario, if we go over budget, it's a binding from the state auditor's office. We really just don't want to go over budget. So we'd rather hang a little high transfer money now.
Great. Thanks, Kristen. Any other questions? This is the first reading. We are now, you're just asking for council agreement to move it on to the second reading. Is that right? All right. Great. Need a motion as such?
So moved.
Thank you. Whoa. Second?
Second.
Thanks, Matt. Any other questions or comments? All in favor? Opposed? So move. Ordinance twenty?
Sir?
Did you get specific?
Kathleen?
Oh, I said a, or yay, yes, whatever. I'm sorry. I voted.
It's been confirmed. All right, ordinance twenty-four dash fifteen, the subdivision code update. Ooh, he's still hoarse.
So this is the, what you're looking at via the ordinance with the changes from Anna, supporting and also supporting the document that the planning commission did, did accept and recommend for approval.
Okay. As you stated not too long ago. Now, any questions from council? Comments?
I have a question. Um, how is this, how is that one hundred daily trip determined? Like, is it a number per household or something?
It would be the amount of car trips for whatever the project. So if it's a four lot subdivision, I might be able to answer this better. But it would be typically two to four trips per day.
So it's like a metric, a formula or whatever. So if that comes back too high, what happens? Do we get to amend something or?
Well, we would, we would hope to have during the, the pre-application conference, which we already typically require for most applications. You get a, a, a number associated with what, what they expect. It is a required request for secret review. They, that is, that is asked. So if their number does come higher than the hundred average daily trips, then that, that does trigger that, that need for that traffic.
Is that like a standard number, like the hundred daily trips is a standard you would use to say, okay, now we have to have a traffic analysis after this point? Or is that, how is that picked?
It, it, it's a standard that, that has been used by other jurisdictions. We can, we can come up with a better number. It, it's, it's, I guess it's high enough that it, 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 it's enough to, to, you know, most, most four lot short flats don't, don't come anywhere near that number. But as you get into a little higher numbers, you definitely can get in there. And, you know, it, it would have definitely triggered for that desert plain subdivision. And we would have had that analysis prior to ever. The, the traffic analysis would have come with the application itself.
Okay.
Had to, to go through the steps to, to try and get them to provide it at a later date.
And then we can require things like supportive roads and building of roads and that kind of thing.
Actually, it works, it can work both ways, but it, 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 you know, by them providing that information, they, they show, you know, they would typically. If it's going to cause an impact, then, then we can have mitigation measures associated with that.
Okay. Thank you. That helps.
Okay. Any other questions? What you're asking for is council agreement to move ordinance twenty-four dash fifteen to the second reading.
Yes.
All right. Need a motion?
I'm not.
Thank you, Sarah. Second?
Second.
Phil, any other questions or comments? Call in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Kathleen?
Aye. I don't oppose.
Okay. Thank you. That moves us on to the second reading. So the options here, because it's kind of our maiden voyage through this. What, what are the options for council here?
At the second reading, if you adopt it, it becomes ordinance or policy or whichever, well, it's an ordinance. So it would become an act of ordinance. Five days.
Yes.
After publication. So your other option is just like it was before. You could say, you know what? I don't want to pass it. We still want to make changes. You have all the same options you've had before. It's just this is the second time it's been in front of you.
And this is.
An extra two, two weeks to review.
And we've had one time to take a look at it. And now this is our options to either accept it or modify.
Correct.
All right. Great. Thank you. Ordinance twenty-four dash thirteen. The twenty twenty-five fee schedule.
Please, mayor. The twenty-five fee schedule. As we discussed last time, most rates have been increased with point seven percent, which is CPI for the current year. Historically, use September CPI West BC. That rate is one point seven percent. With the exception of water rates, sewer rates and the ERC rates, in order to cover the loans for the water reservoir and pressure zone project, as well as sewer collection and water reclamation improvement project, these rates will need to increase beyond the CPI. We've gone over how those rates have increased. It's due to additional loans that we've had to take out on the water, the water project as well as the sewer project. So for the sewer project, we took on an additional one point zero nine million. Take on the additional debt. We propose that sewer rates are increased of six point two percent plus the CPI of the one point seven, which is a total increase of seven point nine percent. And with the water, we are like to increase two percent plus the CPI of one point seven for a total increase of three point seven percent. Staff would recommend that you guys adopt our option two, motion to approve the ordinance twenty-four thirteen as presented.
Okay. Thank you, Kristen. Any questions from council before we ask for a motion? If so inclined, we need a motion from council.
So moved.
Thanks, Matt. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Dell. Without any more questions. All in favor?
Aye.
Kathleen?
Aye.
Opposed? So move. Ordinance twenty-four dash eleven. Big deal here. Budget.
Yes. This is the second reading for our proposed twenty twenty-five annual budget. The annual budget preparation follows the RCW for code cities. The legislative body must hold a public hearing to consider increases in the property tax notice each year. Accepted that public hearing on November sixth. Additionally, the legislative body must schedule hearings on the budget, which have to be done before the first Monday in November. The first hearing was conducted on November sixth and second was on November twentieth. We had our budget worksheets that were distributed to directors as well as the goals that were set by council. Were able to mix and match and hit most or hit all of the goals that were set by council as well as most of the goals set by. Staff recommends option two, motion to adopt ordinance twenty-four eleven.
All right. Thank you, Kristen. Council, questions? If so inclined, we need a motion to accept ordinance twenty-four dash eleven, the twenty-five budget.
So moved.
Thank you, Mike. Second?
Second.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Kathleen?
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations. A big deal. Ordinance twenty-four dash fourteen, the creation of the EMC nine point four two trespass.
Well, good evening.
Another end of the bar.
Yeah. The second reading of the, the trespass ordinance. Up until this point, we haven't had a means to pass people from publicly owned property or controlled property in the city. And this ordinance would also goes hand in hand with the camping ordinance that was passed at the last council meeting. Had a couple of weeks to, to review. I wasn't sure if you guys had any questions or?
Now's the time, right?
Exactly. So I'd like to seek a motion to adopt ordinance twenty-four fourteen, creating chapter nine dot four two trespass warnings to the municipal code.
All right. Any questions or comments from council? Need a motion to accept ordinance twenty-four dash fourteen?
So moved.
Second.
Ooh, get down. Any other questions or comments? Without, all in favor?
Aye.
Kathleen? Thank you. Opposed? Great. Done deal. Just to, just, just to put a period on this thing. I, did you want to say something or are you just stretching? You're saying goodbye? No, okay, good. I just want to note that this is the first time we've kind of gone through this process of the, of number one, having the different special events and all, all the conversation that we have going up to this. The, the transparency of getting this all together and having the first reading and the second reading, I think, is more of a educational piece for staff along with council. And I think that's been a real benefit. And I, I, you know, it's always new and it takes a little bit of time for us old dogs to learn new tricks. But I, this one's good. I, I, I like the way this was going and kudos to all of you for throwing this thing together because I think as a, as a, as a body, we are more informed of some of the weeds a little bit, not too many, that, that, that gets into this. And I, I just want to tell you how much I appreciate that. It's been very nice. Okay. Resolutions. Twenty-four dash fourteen, the policy nine point two vacation.
So the city has a history of way back when. Well, we've always been fairly revenue challenged due to a lack of a large industrial or any industrial tax base to speak in per se. A smaller commercial district as well. And so one way that the city would work with labor is when we couldn't afford to give raises, we would do vacation. Which, as you've seen, when we've done compensation studies, we give, or I should say, our, our team earns more vacation than every other entity we, we would be a comp with, I think, except for one. Problem with that is, one, there are times where it's a struggle to have a full team like your public works. There's a history during hunting season where September, it was all out. September and October, good luck. You know, everybody was out hunting. And, and they had so much vacation and they were utilizing it. And part of it is the way the policy was written, particularly when you're a tenured employee and you're earning a lot of vacation, sometimes it's really hard to use it and still be as productive in your job as you want to be. And so we could let them cash out up to eighty hours historically. But there are still some who, even that, they're still losing vacation. It goes into sickle, even then they can take it with them in retirement at a much reduced rate. So this is an, an, an option for, for people to actually utilize the full value of their compensation. So now they can take vacation or they could now do a hundred and twenty hours versus the eighty hours. It just helps to try and, and give some equality to what they've earned. We do have one of our union contracts where it is written that they get a hundred and twenty hours. So this just makes it consistent across the board for everybody who works with us to be able to do a hundred and twenty hours. Historically, oftentimes the mayor and previous mayors have just allowed people to do a hundred and twenty hours. For instance, we have an employee who, like, we're not going to see them from now till the end of the year because they've got to burn vacation and they're just going to lose it. So this just, it encourages people to work. It encourages them to get the full value of their compensation package that they have in fact earned. And it helps us keep a keep a workforce here so we can actually do what we need to be doing.
Need a motion to accept resolution twenty-four dash fourteen, the personnel policy nine point two vacation.
So moved.
All right. Thanks, Mike. Second?
Well, second.
Thanks, Matt. Questions? Yeah, that's.
Do we have any sense of financial implications? I know it's, it's hard to predict that sort of stuff, but.
It's, it's going to vary every year, just depend on the tenure of our. So now we have a lot of employees with a lot of tenure. Five years from now, we're going to have far fewer employees that are earning at that rate and it'll have less implications. Don't expect it. It's not going to be drastic.
Doesn't change the overall bank that they have. It just changes the way that they're able to, how soon they're able to cash it out or?
Just instead of cashing out eighty hours, they can now cash out a hundred and twenty and they do it at the end of the year. It actually keeps the, speaking of the bank, that's a liability on our books. Should they have all that vacation? It actually helps eliminate some of that liability.
Thanks, Matt. Any other questions? Okay. Motion before council, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Kathleen?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, not twice. You don't get to vote twice. Day was no. Just as a sidelight, and I know it's really a sandpaper piece that gets in there. A big part of the problem or not, one of the issues that is presented with this type of vacation time and stuff like that is that it's all centered around yearly calendar usage from January to December. And we're finding that, or I'm observing, that there is a lot of reduced staff in December because of just this. Something that I would like to look into, I know some people don't make eye contact, but that's okay. Part of, different organizations have different ways of assessing and evaluating this. And some have felt that your vacation is tied to your start date. If you start in February, then that's your calendar year to use or lose the vacation time, which would make it a lot more cumbersome for some. Yes, Bruce, I know. But part of it, but part of it also says you don't have that log jam at the end of December when everybody has to use that time up. So something that, just, just to put in the back of your mind, that adjusting it so that you don't have such a, a rush to the gate in, in, in December, I think is something we probably need to look at. But I know it's a nightmare when it comes down to assessing and keeping a track of it and all that other stuff. Totally understand that, but I just, I just think to end that or lessen that pileup in December. Because well, I'll tell you, after the fifteenth, it's a little dark around here.
There are offices that literally the lights don't come on for that very reason.
Yeah. Okay. So we've got that. Just a, just, just a fly in the ointment. Uh, moving on to our twenty-four dash fifteen, the Grant County Development Agreement. Ron, you want to repeat everything?
This is just a resolution. It doesn't mean that, because it's a resolution, it doesn't have to go over two readings. So we're just looking at how do you authorize, sign the agreement. So we're done with it.
And what it does is just moves us one step closer to checking that box. Okay, need a motion to accept resolution twenty-four dash fifteen?
So moved.
Thanks, Matt. Second?
Second.
Thanks, Phil. Questions from council?
A question on the, it's the fee in lieu of the water rights. Is that, was that fee established by us or how does that, is that like a fee we've established in the past?
Just recently, we started the, that, that other ordinance that, that does this. But in this case, we, we actually kind of put it together. There is a, in that ordinance, there is a, a letter, an email from Dan Haller with Aspect Engineering that, that is a water rights specialist and an engineer. And he did provide us that, that ninety hundred dollars per E R U. Cause he does that, that, that calculation. He, he does, his business, his company goes out and does the searching for the water rights and purchasing of the water rights and transferring of water rights. So that's where that number came from, that ninety hundred. And, and as far as the other number, the, the fifty-six E R Us, that was based on their expected maximum gallons per day.
Okay. I know we've talked a little bit just about kind of an assessment of our fees to be sure that they cover future expenses and concerns that we might have to service stuff. So I, my question, I guess, is it helps to know where it came from. I think that's, that's great. I don't know exactly how to ask it. Is that, how do we know that that's enough, I guess, to protect us in the future for anything that we might be on the hook for?
That's using your, you're never going to know exactly when that trigger point is, but that is your current market value.
Okay.
On the water right, using Aspect Consulting as your.
And that's like a current thing too, so it's not necessarily like an older code.
Other cities have like, like the city of Moses, like have had that type of ordinance in place for over a decade at least. And they had a set fee established. It was very difficult to change. And so with the ordinance, it's the same one that, that the city of Afraid has adopted that allows that, that market consideration.
Okay, perfect.
Use your consultant to set that.
Thanks, that helps.
So it can be assessed at any different time down the road.
Yeah, like if there's a huge increase in the, in the valuable water right, then you're at least tracking with that instead of having a static number that you would need to go back and change by ordinance.
I imagine if eventually they expand or something, we'd be a similar assessment at the time. You'd have a market rate or something like that. Like if their number of beds, all of a sudden, I assumed beds, fifty-six units, all of a sudden were to double in the future, we'd be able to assess.
But not the county. So this is a, this is a one-time rate. So it's, you know, we tried to make sure that it was the, the largest E R U.
Got it. Within the maximum number of gallons, right?
Yeah, unless they're, they're doing something that's triggering a development permit.
Got it.
Um, to do that. So if they're just like, we're putting three beds in every room that holds two, we would not be able to do that. If they were adding a unit that required a building permit, that would be a development permit that would trigger that.
Understood.
So it's current to anything that's designed to be built right now. Whereas if another developer, say down by Dodson Road or something like that, comes up five years down the road, we can reassess that.
Correct.
I have a kind of two-part question. What's the next step to full annexation out there? Is there another page to that? Are we almost there?
At this point, we are just waiting on the county, you know, and with this document in place now, they can go forward. We, we have those, those agreements and the expectation that it will all be fulfilled. So they will need to submit the, their, the petition to annex, which they aren't working on. So that will be the next step.
So it puts the ball in their court.
Still in the process there.
So yeah, one part of it is that they would need to complete that, that subdivision, that short plat to just annex the county property. It's not the whole, I mean, just the jail property. It's not the whole county property. It's just that jail facility site. So once that plat is completed, then they can submit a petition for annexation with that legal description for that law.
My memory was, one of the holdups was that they, nobody fully knew who all the players were and what the plan was for all of it. So I was worried we'd have to do a partial annexation or something like that.
And that's, yeah. And, and so, you know, based on whoever buys the remainder of the county owned property, they would have to pursue a different annexation process.
Okay.
I would say likely including a development agreement as well.
Got you. And then the second half of it, because the jail project started before annexation, is that any way grandfathered in as far as the sales tax revenue? Not to get all greedy on everybody, but does that begin at a certain stage to change over or, or I don't know how that works?
I guess. It would depend, you know, once it's annexed, we, we would have the authority to take the sales tax on that property. But at this point.
Ends on the date of the invoices, I'm guessing? Okay.
And who owns the property?
Right.
Yeah.
The jurisdiction, this time it's still in the county's jurisdiction, so they would be entitled. So our, get them to annex as soon as possible.
Sure, absolutely.
Day after the jails. Any other questions? Motion before council for our twenty-four dash fifteen, all in favor?
Aye.
Oh, Kathleen?
Aye.
It's a distant high. All right. Thank you, council. Items for council consideration, the twenty-four community street and utility.
Mayor, again, once before you, is this for information only? Your staff have worked on upgrading our, our empty street and utility standards. These standards are what we use to kind of define how we want development done within our right of way. Washington State Department of Transportation puts out these these standard specifications for road bridge for municipal construction. What our community standards does is kind of amends that to what, what we want. You know, the, the state says you're going to install a catch basin like this. It sets a state standard. Well, we may not want that grade or we may not want that style. And so our community standard go in and just tweak it a little bit. And so it's, it's to build stuff the way that we want. The state's standards are set up more for highways. They don't really get into the municipal side very deep. And so these standards just give our developers guidance so that when the subdivisions go in or road gets built, it gets built how we want it. There's a lot of information here. There's a lot of verbiage and a lot of detail. We just wanted to leave it in front of you. Prior to bringing them for you for acceptance, just so you had time to process this information, get an opportunity to offer comments on, on anything in there. So that when we brought the standards to you to be accepted, you're fully informed.
So when you tweak or alter a standard like that, is it usually because we're kicking it up a notch?
Um, not necessarily kicking it up a notch. It's just the, the state updates their standards every, about sometimes every, every year or every other year. And they may change their verbiage. And so it's good for us to kind of reevaluate what we have to make sure that we're kind of staying in line with what they're doing. One example of that is cold water protection on concrete. It's evolved over time. The, the state has put all the responsibility back on the contractor. It used to be clearly defined that you had to do this, this, and this at certain temperature points. The state has turned that around where they said, now the contractor has to do this and maintain that. And so we want to make sure that we, our verbiage follows that. And it helps protect us. And yeah, it's just a, just a guideline. And the, the really nice thing about it is that when we get a set of plans and review it to this standard, and then when it's getting built out in the field, this is, this is the book. I mean, that when they're building a road, this is how we want it to be built. And it's going to be this much asphalt, this much rock. The top side, they're going to, you know, there's going to be installed with this. And that's why our street department review it. This is what our water service is like. You know, where we get to call out all the parts of what they're going to put together in water services made exactly how we want. So that when we're trying to keep parts on shelves, we're not having this subdivision this way, this subdivision that way. It's, it's all uniform. The last time our standards were updated was twenty sixteen. And so when, when I came on, I took it, one of the first things I wanted to get out was, really try to get standards open.
All right. Any questions from council?
I, personally, I've always wanted to go aim for most bang for the buck with like our T B D money. Do you think there's anything in here that's significant to just ongoing street maintenance stuff that's going to trigger a big cost? If we have, we're redoing a small parcel or resurfacing a street. Is there anything in that that is going to be impactful financially? Or is it pretty, pretty cosmetic?
This, this addresses more new construction and it, it, it won't really get into the T B D money type. That's more city projects.
Okay.
Now, Greg, the city private should use the same standard.
Sure.
For construction. But when you get into overlays and stuff like that, it's a different cat. We don't really do overlays with subdivisions.
Sure.
So I mean, we're going to, if there's, if they're developing on an existing road and they have to rebuild it, they're going to rebuild it. They're going to tear it.
Sure.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, just making sure it doesn't kick out projects that we had in our lineup of, of things in the twenty twenty-six, twenty-seven area.
This is just, uh, reaffirming the guidelines that we already have.
Got it.
We're changing some standards. We're adding some details that we haven't had before. There's, there's some stuff we're going to bring back to council, where council and federation standards that staff would like to see changed. And one of them is, is based on, we're talking about narrowing up residential streets. Council's comment about how they want to slow down traffic through a residential area, one way to do that is narrow the road. And so you, you narrow the road up, there's less space, it looks smaller, people can't go as fast. They don't want to go as fast. And that's, that's a whole ball of wax, because if you narrow up the road, that means you can bring the houses closer to the front. And helpers can actually end up getting more locks. I mean, it's a whole thing. It also follows along the lines of what the development's going at.
Interesting. So next step, we're just in the development phase here?
It's pretty much written. The, the details are done. There's going to be a little bit of my or tweaking going through it, some verbiage. I want Anna to eventually go through it and make sure that we're not saying something we shouldn't be saying. The public works crew have all the details for them to go through and revise if, if they see something they want different so that we're all on the same page. Hopefully in the next second meeting in January, we can bring in the whole thing.
Okay, great. In front. Dog license information.
Well, it's a, kind of brought up that, the question on our, our dog license fee and what that was. So I wanted to provide council what our dog license fees are and what our neighbors are. We've been provided with, with a document that kind of shows our license fees against some of our neighbors. But one big difference, created as a lifetime license and none of our neighbors do. So that's a little bit of a change. Essentially, what we're looking at right now, our, our license fee is twenty-eight ten. Most of our neighbors are in a ten dollar, but that fee is, is annually. We switched, when it was twenty thirteen into twenty fourteen, is when we changed our model from a yearly license to the lifetime. Some of that was with dog owners having to come into the P D to register their dogs every year. So that's when that change took place. I believe at that time it was ten dollars and thirty. And then over the course of years, now we're up to twenty-eight and fifty-six dollars for, obviously, the, the lifetime altered and then the lifetime on all of your dogs. You consider a lifetime of, of your average dog, it's considerable savings over our neighbors. That's for, any questions on?
The, that chart was interesting. That's kind of what my general assessment was, is that it's been a downward trend of getting the dogs licensed. I don't know that that's directly in effect of what we're doing. I like having. I don't know that that's directly in effect of what we're doing. I like having it as a one time as opposed to an annual, I think.
I mean, doing this, it was, it was educational. I think prior to twenty thirteen, we used to send out reminders to try and share. We'll come in. And that might be something that we need to, to pick up and, and start doing and to get the word out. Some stuff on Facebook. Through the process too, I learned some other models that some other cities are doing. And we're, we're looking at those to see if that's something that, that we might want to adopt. You know, some, some stuff to encourage people to have their dogs altered. The other thing we're looking at is, is doing some kind of integration to get them chipped. Because even though we have tags, most of the dogs, people don't put the tags on the dogs or they fall off. Whereas if we can get some kind of campaign going. You know, we can scan the dog and they don't have to have the collar and the tag. And we can return the dogs more efficiently and so on and so forth. So like that stuff we're looking at.
Yeah, I'd say any, any actions we take, whether it's a change in the fee schedule or something like that, main goal should probably just be for increased compliance. That's the main idea behind it.
I think the information is helpful and it, it is interesting that we're the only ones offering a lifetime. I think that's worth it. I'd be interested, even with those annual fees, and I know they're lower, but they're annual. Are they getting a bigger uptick per population than we are? Or uptake, I should say, per population than we are as far as, like, I don't know how you get that stuff, but if, if our fifty dollars even at a lifetime cost is prohibiting people to come in and do it, if our goal is to get people to register their dogs, then maybe that's still news to come down. I don't know. I think it, it's not a revenue source necessarily. It could cover some costs, but maybe those are things to consider as you together.
It would seem that with today's technology and capability, that chipping would be the way to go. You know, a one-time chip fee, your dog, you know, you don't, you don't have to worry about a collar. It's always, it's always there. And it would be something that's, the enforcement is a lot easier and the paperwork and everything behind it. I mean, it's just future speak. I mean, that, that would be just the easiest way out of this.
Right. The, the complication is how do you get the chip in the dog?
Right.
You know, with the vet.
Right.
You know, anything like that.
Or someday is it going to be as simple as and you're done.
That would be nice.
Yeah. And how many, how many junk drawers at home have a dog tag in it?
Right. Right.
That's just.
No, we could get them to, to chip the dog. That would be.
Is there, I don't have a dog. I did, but don't. Is there, what, what's the fee to get your dog chipped averagely?
I think it's around twenty bucks, but.
See, and then say the lifetime tag is.
You do have to take your vet or your dog to the vet though, to do it. So though it's a low fee, that by itself can be prohibitive to people who maybe don't have resources to do that.
Different options. Okay. Anything else, chief? Good dogs. Items for council action, the acceptance of a donation for shop with the cop.
I guess I'm not.
I guess you're, take us home.
So we spoke earlier, we had a grant from Walmart. I kind of fell a little bit short of, of what we were hoping for, for getting funding for Shop With A Cop. So we were able to do a little bit of fundraising and raised nine hundred and six dollars to help support the program. So tonight, I'm looking for a motion to accept community donations for fun, the fun shop with the cop.
I'm up.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Any other questions? How many kids are we looking at here? I mean, are we even getting close with nine hundred dollars to meet?
Actually, you know, we usually try and play around the two thousand dollar mark. And so this will put us up to nineteen hundred. We've got two families and I think it's going to touch about, about twelve kids. So.
Good.
It should be good.
Okay.
Okay, I heard. Who seconded that?
I did.
Thank you.
Katie, it was Phil. All right. Cool. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Kathleen?
I support it. I'm not opposing.
Thank you. Anything else? Thank you, everybody. It's a long one. Needing a journey.
Can we leave the computers here? Is that an option? They're very nice, but I want to only use it for council purposes. So.